The Republicans' Declaration of Independence of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody, for being here on our Monday, April 22, 2024, regular board meetings for the Southwestern City Schools. Can I get a roll call, please? This is DeAngelo Steele.
Here.
Ms. Liskini.
Here.
Ms. Martindale.
Here.
Ms. Peterson.
Here.
Mr. Bosso.
Here.
First thing is they recommended that the Board of Education approve the agenda for the April 22, 2024 regular board meeting. And I get a motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Martindale. Can I get a second? Thank you, Mrs. DeAngelo Steele. Can I get a roll call? Ms. Martindale.
Yes.
Ms. DeAngelo Steele.
Yes.
Ms. Liskini.
Yes.
Ms. Peterson.
Yes.
Mr. Bosso. Yes. Moving on, the Chairman's Board of Education approved the meeting minutes for the April 8, 2024 meeting as attached. And I get a motion to move that forward.
So moved. Martindale.
Thank you, Mrs. Martindale. Second.
Second. Peterson.
Thank you, Mrs. Peterson. Any directions or work additions to that? Thank you. Can I get a roll call, please? Ms. Martindale. Ms. Peterson.
Yes.
Ms. DeAngelo Steele. Ms. Liskini.
Yes.
Mr. Bosso. Yes. Tonight, we have a couple of presentations for the exact. The first will be Staff Appreciation Week with Dr. Jamie Lesher, Deputy Superintendent. Jamie?
Thank you. Good evening, President Bosso, Dr. Wise, and members of the Board. Each and every day, educators within the Southwestern City School District make a commitment to instill knowledge in the minds and connect with the hearts of their students. Their work is so much more than just a job. Their work requires a lot of humanity, the belief in the human spirit, the dedication to excellence, and a resolve to make differences in the lives of their students. And education is the foundation upon which forms, which all forms of progress are based. Educators spend their careers investing in the dreams of their students. They enlighten, awake, and inspire. Their work is invaluable and should be revered daily. However, tonight is my earnest privilege to declare May 6 through 10 as Staff Appreciation Week for the Southwestern City School District, whereas a strong and effective public education system is essential to the success of all students, and whereas much of this success can be attributed to qualified and dedicated teachers and staff members entrusted with nurturing the educational development of students, and whereas teachers and staff members serve as innovators, listeners, role models, motivators, coaches, advisors, mentors, and whereas teachers and staff members work to open students' minds to ideas, knowledge, possibilities, and dreams, and whereas teachers and staff members continue to influence students long after their school days are only members, and whereas teachers and staff members should be afforded high public esteem, reflecting the value of our community that it places on education, and whereas the Southwestern City School District employs more than 2,800 teachers and staff members who serve approximately 21,000 students and families, and whereas the members of the Southwestern City School District's Board of Education recognize the importance of acknowledging all of our hardworking teachers and school staff members for their tireless dedication and commitment to the education of our students, providing them with the tools to learn, grow, and thrive. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Southwestern City School District Board of Education hereby proclaims the week of May 6 through 10 as Staff Appreciation Week in the Southwestern City School District, and be it further resolved that the Southwestern City School District Board of Education commends and recognizes all of its teachers and staff members and invites residents and community members to join them in thanking our school employees, providing our children and youth with a safe and nurturing learning environment. Thank you.
Dr. Lesher, for that, we are blessed with our beliefs in this district. Moving on, we'll go to the superintendent's search profile with K-12 Business Consulting with Frank. Give that. Frank?
Mr. President, good evening, members of the Board. It's good to see you again. For those of you who don't know me, I am Frank Forstof. I am a consultant with K-12, and we're honored to work with the district in search for a new leader. And Dr. Wise, I want to publicly thank you for your years of dedicated service to this district. Thank you, sir. So I have some thank yous first before I share the overarching comments that'll be found in the search profile. I have a couple of thank yous. First, Evan Diva, who was amazing in making sure that we got to all of our places in our focus groups. It was amazing. We had no context of the district, but we were very efficient in how we got around. Mr. Garci, I thank you for everything you did in terms of communication. And then I need to publicly call out the building leaders. They were so welcoming to us as we came into their buildings, made sure we had the accommodations that we needed in order to do the job we need to do, and that was to listen. So our objective tonight is this. I want to go through the broad strokes of the search profile, and what I will share with the members of the audience that are here tonight. These are just the broad strokes. This full document will be available to the public. It's almost 13 pages long, but I'm going to give the broad strokes tonight, if that's okay, because we want to be official with your time because we know April, the Board of Education has a lot to do. So just some opening reflections before we go on. One, there's a passion in this district to do what's right for kids. We heard that. We read that. Jamie, your proclamation you read was amazing for staff. We felt that passion in all the people that we've talked to. We also felt a very willingness to share comments about what they feel very strongly about in this district, but also ideas about how to make it better, right? And I think that's what the Board wants. And I'm going to share some of those with you tonight. So if we could go to that slide right there. Thank you, Evan. I also want to make mention of my colleague, Deb Campbell, who is out of town, but I think has logged on virtually, so she'll be listening to this as well. So some focus groups and search profile by the numbers. We spent four whole days in your district. It was an exciting four days. There were some Zoom meetings on either side of those dates, and you can see that we did 52 focus groups. That's a lot of interaction, and we thoroughly enjoyed it. I think I did 22 myself. And we had over 500 participants come and spend some time with us and give us feedback, and we really enjoyed each one of that. You can see how we kind of broke down, and I want to compliment the Board for making it a priority that we get out and truly listen and engage with your shareholders, and we did our very best to hit all the key stakeholders of this fantastic district, and we think we got a lot of good information. We also put out an online survey, and we had our copies available, and we received over 650 of those back, and we read every one. That helped us compile this profile. So what you will see, and when you see the final profile as it's posted, this will be broken down into a couple of sections. One, there'll be an introduction, kind of laying out what we did, how we did it, who we did it with, and then we kind of break it down into the three questions that I'll review with you tonight. In each of the three questions, we craft at the very top the overriding themes or the consistent themes that we heard, based on the strengths, the challenges, and the attributes. And then underneath that, we broke down what we heard from each of the groups that we talked to, and the ones at the top are the ones we heard most prevalent working down there. I would share with you that we could not include every comment that we heard or we read, or you would have had a 500-page document, and I don't think anybody wants that. But we also, what we tried to do is we tried to condense and combine comments that had the same kind of general flair and theme. Okay? So with that being said, I'd like to go to the next one. Let's talk a little bit about the significant strengths that your shareholders articulated to us about this amazing district, and these emanated out of, if not all, most of the groups that we talked to. The first one really relates to, obviously, you know, you live, you work, you send your kids to a diverse district, but it's celebrated. That diversity is celebrated among all your shareholders, among the students, the parents, and the community members. Okay? The next strength that we heard, very, very prevalent, and certainly, you know, Jamie did a great job of reading the proclamation. You've got amazing staff. They're dedicated, they care. That's teachers, administrators, support staff that serve the kids in your district. Overwhelming, overwhelming comments that we heard. We heard a very strong prevalent theme is that the district enjoys community support and involvement. You've got great partnerships with your communities, with your municipal people. We heard that consistently in our conversations. Staff articulated to us that they're grateful for the opportunities they have to be better and to grow, and that's offered by the district, and you should be applauded for that. And then we heard consistently as well, not only from staff, but we heard from your students very strongly, that they feel welcomed, and they feel secure, and they feel nurtured in their buildings. And I think that's kind of what you have to be about as a school district. Okay? If we go to the next one. Again, another consistent theme, the fiscal responsibility of the district has long been in place, and I think we heard a couple of years, 2008 or 2009 was the last time this district went before its voters for new monies. That's a pretty unique story, and you should be incredibly, incredibly proud of that. Kind of the next two kind of go together, and that talks a little bit about the educational opportunities and support you have for your students. One that came up a lot was your Career Academy. How unique is that, that you have your own Career Academy in your own district? That's amazing, and we actually got to spend some time with those amazing students. The next one, and actually, the last one, is your leadership. Great schools emanate out of great leadership, right? And that's been recognized in this district, both at the district level, building level, and also that collaboration and partnership you have with your associations, your teachers' association, your classified association, was also a prevalent theme that we heard as well. Okay? So you've got a lot of great things going in your district, and be proud of that. Be proud of that. Okay? So the next one we wanted to do is in an ongoing effort to be better as we think about this profile, is what were those areas of challenge, issues, opportunities for growth, or opportunities for improvement? We phrased it in different ways when we talked to people to see how it resonated with them, and there were several that came up. The first one I want to talk just for a moment about is this notion, you are such a large district, 23,000 plus 1,000 students. There was a sentiment that it, there's a little bit of a lack of cohesion in the district, that there is almost two separate districts. And the perception is that that lack of cohesion comes about a little bit with maybe some inequities, perception inequities of funding, of even attention, and even some resources. And I know the new superintendent will certainly want to consider that as they get in the chair. The next thing that we heard pretty prevalently is there's some, and you'll notice how we kind of did a question slash concern. We heard both, okay? We heard some questions, but we also heard some concerns about the Board of Education. And I'm looking at you in an effort to be incredibly transparent. I know that's what you want about certainly your lack of experience. You can look at just your time in the chairs, but also about, you know, some of the agendas you may bring to the Board of Education. What's your vision for this district? What's your support for teachers and all students? And your feelings about diversity? Those were some questions and/or concerns that were raised about the Board of Education in general. Another one that we got quite a bit was the growing population. You've got some growth going on in your district, typically in pockets and primarily in a couple of high schools that we talked to, and the kids were very upfront about that, about hallways and things like that in classrooms. But it just didn't happen there. We heard it in a number of areas, and your community's attuned with that, and they're anxious to see how that's going to be addressed coming in the future. Okay? So the next one, this is kind of a double-edged sword. You notice in the strengths, you were complimented and applauded as you should have been for your fiscal approaches, but there's a perception that maybe some of that conservative approach has created kind of a lean staffing profile in the district. And that lean staffing profile maybe is impacting the level of service that is giving, that is offered to kids in your buildings. The next one, I think, is in every district, right? You want to recruit, retain, hire great teachers. What we also heard is that there's a certain prevalence and interest in hiring teachers and staff that look like the students that are sitting in the classrooms, and that's a priority that I think your community is really interested in. Again, I don't think the next one's unique, but I think because of the volume that you simply have in your district, the student needs are growing. They're growing across the board. Student needs specifically in ESL, special education, and students require support. So how do you balance that, right, with being fiscally very strong by also providing the right support for kids when they need it? Another concern and maybe question is increased behavioral and discipline challenges that you're seeing in pockets of your district. That was something that the Board of Education brought up, and certainly, we heard that pretty consistently throughout. But not just that, it's the what, but how it's addressed, right? And how a district is going to handle that moving forward. And then we heard pretty specifically that, you know, you've got such a complex matrix of transportation in your district, right, that impacts so many kids every single day, and they'd like to see some improvement in the logistics to improve how kids are gotten to school and got home each and every day. Okay? So those are the areas of growth, improvement, opportunities, and so forth. So how does that all translate to your next leader, right? So we asked the question, basically, if you could kind of paint the perfect superintendent, and I'll just share with you, there's no such person out there. But your community had a lot to say about that, and there's a lot more detail in the actual profile that kind of articulates a little bit more. But I think the community and the Board should be gratified about number one. Your community wants a superintendent that puts students first, right? Makes decisions in the interest of students, right? Kind of a really prevalent theme is they want someone that's visible, but then there's a compatriot to that, and that's approachable. They want to be able to talk to the superintendent. They want to be able to dialogue with the superintendent. The next one kind of goes along a little bit with that is a leader that seeks input from the community and district stakeholders. It's community schools, right? And so the leader has an opportunity to engage all the stakeholders to make the district the very best it can be. Okay? A leader with strong financial acumen, got great work going financially in the district, fiscally responsible. Community wants to see that continue in his next superintendent. Focused on academic, academic progress, academic achievement of students. That's your core business, right? And they want to see a leader that will continue that in the interest of students. Also, someone who understands and values the diversity that really raised to the top as a strength of this district. Someone who'll walk hand in hand and applaud and celebrate the diversity of this great district. And then, secondly, and then at the bottom of that page right there, someone who's a public education advocate, someone who supports public education. And then finally, and there could be 100 slides, but these are the ones that resonated, strong and transparent community. Someone that's out there, transparent. Decisions are hard in the superintendent chair, but when decisions are made, I think the community would like someone to explain the reasons behind those decisions. Those are the kinds of things that we heard. And then the last one there is because of the complexity of your district and the volume of your district and the size of your district and all the moving parts, the community and shareholders would like a leader that has strong and varied experiences that will put them in a position to be most successful as superintendent. Okay? Okay. So to close, I think it's be important to just kind of review a little bit where we're at. This is posted on the website, but here are some of the key dates moving forward in our search, beginning with the end in mind with the Board's date of setting June 8 as their goal of hiring a new superintendent. You can kind of work up from the bottom and see where the interviews will take place. We're, application window is May 17. That's when that closes. It's really early in that process, right? It's really early. We absolutely have a full month yet until applications are due, and then we'll start talking to the Board about who they want to talk to. So finally, to close, what do we do with this, right? The search profile. I would encourage everyone in the audience to take a peek at it when it's posted on the superintendent's search tab on the front page of the website. Take a read. We spent a lot of time, we're very diligent with this, and we believe it's reflective of what's in the hearts and on the minds of the Southwestern City Schools community. We will start very quietly, provide this to potential candidates because they want to know, and then hopefully, the Board will see this as an informative document as you move forward. I am open and welcome to any questions.
Yes. One question I know I'm going to be confronted with, Frank, is, I guess, is to you too, Evan. When is that going to be posted for them to review? Okay. Thank you.
That's a great turnaround.
He's a good man.
He is a good guy.
I don't have a question, but I do have a comment. I just wanted to say thank you, Frank and Deb, for all your hard work and dedication to this process, and thank you to all of the staff and students and community members who came out to the forums, who filled out the surveys, and that are interested in being an active part of this search. So thank you from the Board. We'd want to thank everybody for being an active participant.
And Mrs. Liskini, I'll second that. We were very clear with people, we talked to them, is we wanted authentic and real dialogue because it doesn't help the process now. So thank you for sharing.
Anyone else? Thank you so much.
Thank you for my honor to be with you tonight. Have a good rest of the meeting.
Thank you. Next, we're going to move on to the Science of Reading with Dr. Jean Gerard, our Executive Director of Elementary Education.
Mr. President Bosso. Ms. Martindale, members of the Board. Dr. Wise and Mr. Garci. Thanks for having us tonight. We're going to share our vision for literacy across the K-12 platform and our students in kindergarten through 4th grade. This evening, you'll hear from Mrs. Towery. She'll share the framework for literacy instruction for students in kindergarten through 4th. You will hear our responsive, robust, and focused approach to instruction for those children. It's my honor, and truly an honor and a privilege, to work next to Margaret. It's my honor to introduce her to you tonight so she can share our presentation.
Evening, Board members. Dr. Wise, Mr. Garci. It's really a pleasure to be here today and be able to talk about my passion for 30 years in Southwestern City Schools and what I work and live for every day, and it's just, it's a treat to share. We're starting out with some snapshots of kids in our district involved in the science of reading, Science of Reading in Action. Kids are studying how to merge their oral language with letters, words, sentences, and ideas, and kids are always a part of everything we do. My goal in speaking with you this evening is that you leave feeling confident in our literacy processes and our resources regarding the science of reading in Southwestern City Schools, and I propose to do that by first demonstrating to you that we do have a clear understanding of how the science of reading instruction works, and we have a district structure that supports student success, and then I'd like to move on to some of the state guidance that will lead us to the development of better skilled readers and writers and increase achievement. So let's take a quick look at the science of reading itself. This is an infographic called Scarborough's Rope. Scarborough's Rope is the overview of the science of reading in which two strands work together to lead students to skilled reading. At the top, you see language comprehension. If you can't make sense of something orally, you will struggle to make sense of it in writing and reading. The second strand is word recognition. This is the ability to decode written letters, words, sentences on the page and associate them with what we know in oral language. As you can imagine and even see in this infographic, the work is much more complex than just two ideas. We see threads that make up the two strands. We believe that in our district, we have had a particular strength in the language comprehension strand, and we hope to preserve that strength while shoring up our instruction in the word recognition strand to be more systematic and explicit. Those are two important words tonight, systematic and explicit. All of this is the what of our work. When we get it right, students will become increasingly strategic as you see the two strands weave together, and it will result in automatic reading resulting in skilled and on-level reading. Next, I'd like to show you a 30-second video clip of kids in action. Here, you will see students practicing the sounds that they hear in words. They are learning how to manipulate language by adding and taking away sounds. They are not using print at this moment, but at other times in their day, they will be. That's an example of the oral language part of the reading rope. And now we have one more video, another 30-second clip. These students are using what they know about sounds to turn sounds into letters, and then they will blend these letters into a word. Then they will read and write that word. If they know the sounds that letters make, and they know what a cat is, they can read and write that word. Okay. Picture paints a thousand words. That is what we are doing. Next, this is our district framework for learning. This is the how of our work. So looking at the outside perimeter, starting from the top, you will see a simple repeating process of planning, teaching, assessing, and reflecting and adjusting, and then around again. Just as we noticed in Scarborough's Rope, the details are more complicated. What we know is that when students practice new skills in front of us, we can provide responsive teaching in that moment. Thus, we have a 35:65 ratio of teacher-led and student-centered work, meaning teacher talk about 35% of the time in the classroom, 65% of students practicing their skills right in front of us, so we can provide responsive tips and interventions. So now I'd like to talk a little bit about the state guidance. With an overall understanding of the what and how of our work, we will turn our attention to the ways that we are in compliance and even ahead of state expectations for engaging in the science of reading. This first slide was really bad form with so many words on it. That's not how you're supposed to do PowerPoint. But there's a lot of things that our district is doing even before and aside from state standards, really ever since 2009 and even before. I was going through some files in my office and happened upon this file of when I did my own training as a literacy coach, and it just made me think about science of reading and how we've always kind of attended to it. I learned how to set up a word study lesson to be multisensory way back in those days, and my training included the principle, quote, "Students need the confidence to never skip a difficult word because they have the strategies needed to sound, to make the word make sense." You may hear sometimes in the wider world that schools have encouraged students to guess at reading. It's one of the critiques out there. That has not been the case here in my experience for nearly 30 years in the district. In fact, I developed my own understandings and expertise of the teaching of reading right here in Southwestern City Schools. The science of reading is not new to us, but we are becoming, say it with me, more explicit and systematic about... explicit and systematic about the way we do phonics instruction. So back to all those words on the slide. In 2012, when I moved to the District Service Center, we already had phonics as part of board adopted resources in elementary school. In the 2018-19 year, we purchased dedicated units of study for phonics for kindergarten through 2nd grade classrooms. In 2223, the IMSE, which is kind of a standard and good training for this work, their comprehensive and morphology plus training began to be offered for general education teachers who were interested. And before that time, many of our special education teachers had that training already. This year, 2324, we did two phonics pilots in the district that were supported and trained. We had 93 teachers involved in those. We did IMSE morphology training for intermediate literacy coaches and myself. And we had a dedicated cohort of 25 teachers who took the IMSE comprehensive training together as a cohort, so filled their whole entire class just with our people. From 2021 through this year, the kindergarten through 6th grade literacy curriculum process has been in place, and that, we'll speak a little bit more of that later, but our task was to propose new resources. We studied all of the resources on the state mandated list as part of our work. And here in just a few weeks, you will be considering the curriculum team's proposal for new resources. So the Science of Reading is something that we've been about for quite some time. Onto what the state expectations are for us. So the state has developed 18 hours of training that is required on the topic of dyslexia. By September 15, 2023, all of our kindergarten and 1st grade teachers had completed that training, and many of our 2nd and 3rd grade teachers. By September 15 of this year, any grade 2, 3 teachers who hadn't already completed the training will have that finished. And by September 15 of 2025, all of our special education teachers in grades 4 to 12 will also complete that training. The state created those modules so that any teacher who is likely to have students in need of this intense instruction and word recognition will find the knowledge and support that they need to teach explicitly and systematically. Literacy coaches and I have taken the training as well. Another part of state legislation is that we screen for risk of dyslexia and provide intervention to students who need it, and we are in complete compliance with this requirement as well. More recently, in addition to the dyslexia modules and the screening that the state has mandated a different training in the Science of Reading, the information from the dyslexia modules and the Science of Reading modules overlap quite a bit. So the length of the Science of Reading training depends on whether the teacher has already completed the dyslexia modules I spoke of in the previous slide. All of our teachers and administrators from pre-kindergarten through 12th grade will complete training that is tailored to their position by June 30 of 2025. The coursework is in between 7 to 22 hours depending on their position, and again, whether they have taken training in the past. All our administrators are aiming to complete this training by early 2024, 25 academic school year. Okay, back to kids. Here we see students showcasing the final goal and the expectation of all this work, choosing to read independently, understanding what they read with increasing complexity. We have reviewed the what and the how of our work, and this is the why. Here you see 4th graders doing some complex work. They have learned the structure of an opinion essay, including creating a hook, a claim, evidence, paragraphing, spelling, punctuation. If they don't use these things effectively in their writing, it will be challenging for them to read their own work fluently like an author. There are a lot of plates to keep spinning in this work, but with practice, they will get better at both reading and writing, until in high school, they are writing sophisticated essays based on complex ideas. Starts in elementary. Here you see evidence of older students using literacy skills to embark on journeys of discovery in content areas. For example, writing about kinetic energy at the bottom left, the greatest common factor and least common multiple at the upper center, science project at the upper right, trying out different nonfiction structures for their writing in the bottom center, daily writing about reading at the top left and bottom right. We use foundational skills to propel our students into academic reading and technical writing, which are highly sought-after skills in the workplace. So we were tasked with acquiring and using resources from the Ohio K through 5 mandated list for reading instruction, and we have included grade 6 in this work as well. Our team of 49 educators, including special education, T-Sol, gifted, literacy coaching, has been looking at these resources, and we began our journey months before the state list even appeared. Point of pride, we anticipated almost every single thing that would be on the state list, and we had already previewed and looked at them and evaluated. Our pilot studies in phonics indicated that systematic and explicit phonics instruction is most effective, when it also helps students transfer their skills to connected text, or as you and I would call it, real reading. These things helped us look at state-directed resources more critically to find the best fit for the strong work that we are already doing. So after board approval of the new resources, we will get to work training and implementing. This will take time and energy and effort, but we intend to surround the new resources with robust professional learning to get the best implementation. This will include our job embedded coaching offerings in summer academy and PD time throughout the year. Our professional learning involves the understanding the resources and looking at student work to plan and deliver responsive teaching. Thank you for the gift of time so I could explain all the things that are going on in literacy in our district. It's really a joy to share it all with you. Any questions, honey?
Just thank you so much. I just say for all your hard work.
It's a joy. It's lovely. It's wonderful to work.
Great. Presentation will be District Support and Services with Nicole Tyho, Director of Special Education.
President Bosse, Vice President Martindale, members of the board, Dr. Wise and Mr. Garci. My name is Nicole Tyho, and I am the Director of Special Education for our district. I am pleased to be with you tonight, along with two of the department coordinators, to discuss the sports and services available within Southwestern City Schools. As we move through our presentation tonight, our goal is to share with you the wonderful staff, supports, and programs we have available to help our students in their educational journey. Our presentation will focus on special education staffing, our service delivery model, program partners, and an opportunity for questions and further reflection. You all have in front of you a note card to jot down any questions, ideas, or wonderings that you might have throughout these slides. Please feel free to use your card so that we can ensure appropriate responses following tonight's presentation. Our department team is small, but we have the honor of supporting students from preschool all the way through post-secondary. I have the privilege to be the Director of the department with such talented administrators, special education staff, related service providers, and paraprofessionals. Each of these make up a wonderful opportunity, each of these people make wonderful opportunities possible within Southwestern City Schools. As you can see on the next two slides, this is our administrative team. Don Brewer is our preschool coordinator. Dronda Kemp is the coordinator of the collaborative classrooms that we have with Franklin County Developmental Disabilities and our Head Start Program. Nancy Juro is the coordinator of our related services and our transition staff. Janet Gilman is the coordinator for our high schools. Debbie Carpenter, the coordinator for our intermediate and middle schools. And Kathy McCoy is the coordinator for our elementary schools. While our department has the opportunity to serve the district in many ways, it's helpful to see some of the areas of overarching areas of support. Special education is complex, individualized, and ever-changing field, both with student needs and state guidance. Our team works with related service providers, program partners, teachers, help me grow coordinators, health services, and many others to provide a comprehensive plan for each student with special education needs. Over my time as the Director here in Southwestern, we've continued to assess the needs of our students and have worked to identify ways to provide high-quality and equitable access to services throughout our large district. The district has expanded both in special education programming as well as staffing for special education. As you know, special education students all have individual plans supported by a wide variety of specialists to serve these specially-designed instruction-related service support for school personnel and health and medical needs. We are proud of a comprehensive group of professionals that make up our team. As a public school district, we have the obligation to provide a continuum of support supports for IEP teams to consider for each and every student. While the continuum will always remain fluid, the district has in place an expansive set of services and program models to support our students' needs. As you can see, our services expand from general education to specialized learning classrooms to longstanding collaborations, all with the intent of enhancing student experiences. I would now like to welcome our coordinators to share more information about our K-12 service delivery model and program partners.
Thank you, Nicole. Good evening, everyone. My name is Janet Gilman. I am a special coordinator for grades K through 12. I am pleased to follow Nicole in highlighting and describing the supports and services that the district offers to our diverse community of learners. I will continue this overview of the supports and services with a closer look at the ways in which our district supports our special education students in grades K through 12. As you can see, our supports extend and surround the general education classroom, extending beyond to support students with unique learning needs. These options include concentrated instructional services and content learning classrooms, as well as the option for more specialized programming, including the district's cross-categorical classrooms and behavior-focused classrooms. The district also works with a number of program partners along the way. For greater clarity, I will provide you with a description of the options available to our students, starting with grades K through 6. Students in these grades may receive instruction from intervention specialists who consults, collaborates, and co-teaches with general education teachers. Additionally, some students receive individualized instruction in an extended learning area where an intervention specialist meets with a student in a designated area, in a small group, or in a one-on-one setting to address more specific educational needs. In addition to the above, one of the unique continuums that is available in grades 5 through 12 is our concentrated instructional services model. Students participating in this option receive support from an intervention specialist for part of their day to address the needs outlined in their IEP. Moving on to grades 7 through 12, students who participate in the content learning classroom meet an individual, I'm sorry, meet an intervention specialist for specific and sometimes modified instruction in an academic subject. This location can be in an intervention specialist's classroom or another assigned location within the building. To address needs that typically involve executive function, our students can access the Open Learning Lab. This setting can help students with organization, access accommodations, and receive extra academic support and instruction throughout their day. The last two continuums I would like to present include our specialized learning classrooms available in grades K through 12. This includes our cross-categorical classrooms and our behavior-focused classrooms. In our cross-categorical classrooms, students participating in this environment are looking to grow their academic, daily living, and self-independence skills while accessing paraprofessional support for adaptive behavior, communication, and/or safety needs throughout their day. In this environment, students may receive instruction in combination of the specialized learning classroom and through inclusive opportunities within the general education classroom or other areas of the school. Students who participate in behavior-focused classrooms may receive instruction and support in areas that include behavior management and academic instruction with the goal to increase independence within the school environment. Students receive the support of paraprofessionals to help with monitoring, interventions, and safety as needed throughout their day. Thank you for allowing me to share these classroom descriptions with you tonight. Our presentation does not end here. Next, Kathy McCoy will share how our continuum is expanded with collaboration through our program partners.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Kathy McCoy, and I'm the elementary special education coordinator with the district. As we continue our discussion regarding district supports and services, I would like to share with you about many of our incredible program partners. As part of offering an expansive continuum of services and continuing our dedication to wrapping support around each and every student, we are lucky to have ongoing collaborations with our local educational service center, another highly knowledgeable and expertly-trained entities in the central Ohio area. With each of these partnerships comes skilled professionals working to meet the unique needs of all the students they serve. Within 22 Southwestern City School buildings, you will see one of four classroom programs supervised and staffed by our partners at the Educational Service Center of Central Ohio. The ESE programs here in Southwestern are STACK, STRIVE, Low Incidence, and a Behavior Support Classroom. Each of these create environments intentionally tailored to meet the diverse needs of students. Structured Teaching for Autistic and Communication Delayed Kids, referred to as STACK here in our district, is a structured educational environment for up to six students per classroom and offers a small group experience with the support of an intervention specialist and two paraprofessionals. STACK advocates the use of visually-cued instruction to facilitate organization and independence. STACK uses both individual and group instruction to increase and generalize mastered skills. STRIVE, or Structured Teaching Reinforced in a Visual Environment, is a specialized program that utilizes visual components to support students throughout their school day. While the goal of the program is to have students access the general education environment to the greatest extent possible, the program offers daily support through direct instruction in social skills, opportunities for self-regulation, and access to a program intervention specialist and paraprofessionals. Low Incidence is our next available instructional model. The students participating in Low Incidence benefit from support in academic, adaptive behavior, and independence throughout their school day. Students receive intensive small-group instruction in a highly specialized learning environment designed for just eight students per class. The final specialized learning classroom that we will discuss is a Behavior Support Classroom. This program is designed for students who experience unique emotional or behavioral challenges within the school setting. The program aims to promote and facilitate access to the educational environment through a blend of educational and mental health strategies. Through continued partnership with the Educational Service Center of Central Ohio, our students have received access to and support from mental health professionals, board-certified behavior analysts, registered behavior technicians, as well as a reading specialist. On our final slide, we have highlighted additional supportive options within the central Ohio area, all available to our Southwestern students. These programs offer a wide range of services, including one-on-one instructional services, small-group behavior classrooms accompanied by mental health or day treatment services, expertise in delivering high-quality instruction to students with visual and hearing-based impairments, and so much more. As we all know, providing great experiences for our students can, at times, take a village, and we are so grateful for our program partners who seek to meet the needs of all Southwestern students enrolled within their programs. Just as we are always looking at potential needs within our continuum of services, we are also always seeking experts in the community that can provide exceptional services to our students and families. This brings us to the conclusion of this evening's slides, and I'd like to invite Nicole back to answer any questions you may have at this time. Thank you.
We appreciate the opportunity to share with you about our department, and I look forward to answering any questions you may have or answering them later on.
Again, I just have a comment. I have questions, but I can get with you later. I know we've got a lot. I always have questions. Thank you so much. I know this was a big ask, but as a new board, we are very interested in learning all aspects of the district and how everything works. And so I think the community is very interested in knowing as well. We hear a lot from parents in the community, questions, concerns regarding special education, and I thought this would be a great opportunity, as well as the other board members, to share with the community and staff, everyone that's here, just the amount of work that you guys put in, the vast expanse of special education in this district, and the amount of work that you guys put in, the vast expanse of special education in this district, and um just a little bit better understanding of what's going on. So thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
Thank you so much, everybody. Thank you, everybody that presented tonight. Actually, on the personnel with Mrs. Peterson. Oh, sorry, sorry, everybody. Sorry, Kelly. My apologies, everybody. Item interaction of the student, school, and community with Mrs. Martindale.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. Two little items, but I know that both of these groups would definitely want to have their question heard tonight. So we've got a Central Crossing High School girls' basketball team wanting to travel to Tiffin University to a camp that's gonna take place June tenth through the twelfth. All expenses are paid by volunteers. And then Rope City High School Travel Club to travel to France, Monaco, and Italy uh in June of twenty twenty-six, and all of those trips are yet paid by students and parents. And having reviewed uh both of these items, I now move them to the crash.
Thank you. So Miss Mrs. Martindale, can I get a second? Second, Mrs. Liskini. Roll call. Ms. Martindale.
Yes.
Ms. Liskini.
Yes.
Mrs. DeAngelo Steele.
Yes.
Mrs. Peterson.
Yes.
Mr. Bozo. Yes. All right. Now moving on for item interaction, the personnel, Mrs. Peterson.
All right. On the board agenda for Monday are thirteen personnel items involving five hundred and eight persons. That is the largest number. But I understand it though. Thirteen certificated and administrative resignations. You had three administrative employments. Forty certificated employments. Nine classified resignations. Four classified changes in employment. Eight classified employments. Seventy-seven certificated re-employments. Twenty non-renewals of limited contracts. And three hundred and thirty-three resignations of certificated substitute teachers. And one message of condolence for a deceased staff member. Sherry Lynn Walker. Sherry began her employment in the Southwestern City School District on September twenty-second, nineteen ninety-seven as a school secretary at Finland Middle School. She served in that position for the remainder of her career in the district. In recognition and appreciation of her service to the students of our district, a motion is in order by the Board of Education expressing deepest sympathy to the family and friends of Ms. Walker, who passed away on April ninth, twenty twenty-four, one month after her March first, twenty twenty-four retirement. After reviewing these items, I move them for passage.
Thank you, Mrs. Peterson. Can I get a second?
A second.
Second, Mrs. Martindale. Roll call. Mrs. Peterson.
Yes.
Ms. Martindale.
Yes.
Mrs. DeAngelo Steele.
Yes.
Ms. Liskini.
Yes.
Mr. Bozo. Yes, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you so much, President Bozo. Members of the board, Dr. Wise and Mr. Garci. Um, so it is a great privilege to be able to introduce to you some new faces to our administrative team. Um, but before I do that, I would like to say that, you know, as we say in our business, bricks and mortar do not make a school. It is the people that run those buildings. And so we've had three retirements of folks that have devoted most of their professional work and lives here in Southwestern. Um, so one of the things that we do when we hire is we think long and um and far-reaching about the impact that that leadership has at the building level. So it's with great joy that I'm able to introduce tonight first, um, the incoming principal of Monterey Elementary, uh, Ms. Amanda Bradford. I'm gonna give a little background about Amanda and let her say a few words. Amanda Bradford Jordan is an enthusiastic and data-driven educator with eighteen years of admini- uh elementary education experience. Um, she's a native of Marion, Indiana. She holds a bachelor's degree in elementary education and a master's of arts in education and a literacy specialist license as well. Um, she started her career as a fourth-grade teacher in Mallard Creek Elementary in Charlotte, North Carolina. She was recognized as the two thousand nine Elementary Education Teacher of the Year there and achieved national board certification as well. She is currently an assistant principal at uh Gahanah Lincoln, excuse me, Gahanah Jefferson School District at Lincoln Elementary. Um, she has settled back in Ohio. Um, her lifelong goal of being a building leader for Monterey Elementary is going to be actualized. And I believe she's here with her husband Emory and her family to support her. So Hannah, welcome.
Board members, Dr. Wise, thank you so much for this opportunity. I'm thrilled to join the community in Monterey and get to know all of you.
I didn't see it sneak in. Is Josh Choir here? Okay, so just very briefly, Josh Choir is returning to us. He served two uh seven years as an intervention specialist at Finland Middle. He went to Granville Excempted School and served as the assistant uh principal of their middle school. And he will be returning to us as the Park Street Intermediate Assistant Principal. So welcome back, Josh. And and then finally, Joshua Harding, who is going to be our principal of Harmon Elementary. Um, Joshua started his career um as actually a high school social studies teacher and then had leadership experience um in some uh non-public school. He is currently the uh principal, and I don't want to butcher the names, of Luganda. All right, Luganda Elementary in the Springfield School District. So welcome, Josh.
Thank you, board members. Uh, Dr. Wise, I appreciate it. I'm super excited to be able to join. Um, the non-public school is actually on Gimelinard Center that they kind of um have had dealings with the district, and I'm just uh very excited to be able to be a part of this. So.
All right, moving on, we got items for discussion.
Yes, actually, I can get you some. It's funny, because I just wrote myself a reminder to check in with uh Kelly and Wise. So we were able to get um board or committee members um selected that we um thought of that would be great for the committee have sent out an email to those individuals, allowing time for them to be able to tell us if they could serve on that committee and if they could meet the requ- uh requirements for it um with the time that we're gonna put in for it. And then actually, we will be getting ready to um next come back. Um, and we're trying to aim to have our first meeting on May seventh. So I'm allowing, it was allowing a few more weeks for any more people to come up and say whether they couldn't, but so far, um, I was gonna check in with Kelly and Wise and let them know that it sounds like we got a solid um committee group. So we'll be looking forward to give you guys some updates on that. So yes.
Thank you, Mrs. Peterson.
You're welcome. Just so you know, yeah, we're gonna have um, I'm gonna chair that committee, and Kelly's gonna vice-chair.
Yeah, thank you so much. All right, moving on. Um, it's a motion for executive session to recommend the Board of Education adjourn to executive session according to policy zero one six six to consider the employment dismissal or the motion of the public employee to claim against the public employee or matter required kept confidential by the federal law or regulations in state statutes. Can I get a motion to move to executive session?
No, move.
So, thank you, Mrs. Liskini. Can I get a second?
Second.
Right, Mrs. Peterson. Can I get a roll call? Ms. Liskini.
Yes.
Mrs. Peterson.
Yes.
Mrs. DeAngelo Steele.
Yes.
Ms. Martindale.
Yes.
Mr. Bozo. Uh, yes, uh, the board doesn't expect any more actions to be taken place after the decision. And I was notified that that survey that we presented is up and live. So if anybody wants to look at that, thank you, Evan. Eight forty-three. Mrs. DeAngelo Steele.
Here.
Mrs. Liskini.
Here.
Ms. Martindale.
Here.
Mrs. Peterson.
Here.
Here. Um, last item on the agenda is adjournment. I recommend the Board of Education meeting be adjourned.
Make a motion.
Thank you, Mrs. Peterson, a second. Um, Mrs. Martindale, thank you. Roll call. Mrs. Peterson.
Yes.
Ms. Martindale.
Yes.
Mrs. DeAngelo Steele.
Yes.
Ms. Liskini.
Yes.
Mr. Bozo. Yes.